Welcome to Elected, a podcast for women in and around politics and our allies tonight. Actually, I tonight because I'm actually for the first time recording this at nighttime. With my guest tonight Jasmine Meehan, the Calgary City councillor, former Olympian. And the first woman to have a baby while sitting in office on Calgary City Council. Which leads immediately into our topic of discussion tonight, which is remote work and being a working parent. So Jasmine, thank you so much for being with me tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me, Sarah.
Well, and I thought it was even interesting because when we talked about recording and then I said that the afternoon didn't work for me because I have to go and pick up my kids. And then you said, I think you proposed possibly the evening and I was really cautious because I didn't want to just monopolize your time in the evening. Plus, your baby is four months old.
That's right, yep.
So, um, yeah, being kind of, you know, I want to be respectful of other people's boundaries on, on personal time, but acknowledging that being a working parent can also look very different for everybody.
Absolutely, and I was happy to chat with you tonight.
Yeah, thanks. Which leads into the question of remote work and what was debated today at Calgary City Council. So can you give some background as to why it came up today and what today was about?
Yeah, absolutely happy to. I guess it would have been the last council, the council that was sitting from 2017 to 2021 did approve a parental leave policy for councillors to take time away for up to six months during their term. No one's ever used it and I came along in 2021 and was elected. And we were still having remote work as a result of the pandemic and because remote work was an option, it really opened up the possibility when I did get pregnant and had my son in September of 2023, for me to consider actually not taking a parental leave myself. My husband ended up taking a parental leave and to continue to work because I would have the flexibility of remote work that actually everyone on council had. But given that there had been a number of instances across city council of individuals maybe not utilizing the remote work privileges in the way that they should. The Ethics Commissioner made a recommendation last week that remote work would be restricted to only instances of if you have a personal medical emergency, then you can be remote or if you are doing out of town council business. And so I got a bunch of calls from media and the public saying like, oh, you've been taking meetings remote because you have a four-month-old baby and it sounds like with these new rules, that's not going to be allowed. And so, uh, you know, I thought, okay, I'm going to propose an amendment because I think it's really important that City Hall is accessible to, you know, different people from different walks of life to be able to do this job. And it's funny because, you know, I think the last council was really heralded for passing like a parental leave policy, but truthfully, the pandemic did more for for parents and accessibility than any policy ever could with the advent of remote work. And so the thought of losing it was something that I just don't think was okay, not just for me and my situation, but also just for the future of representation at City Hall.
Well, and I won't ask you to go into the details, but so I will share one specific instance of, I can't recall if it was last year or sometime. It was in this current, current term where one of your council colleagues, instead of taking part in the meeting remotely, even like in an office or in a closed space, took part in a meeting on the golf course while actively playing golf in a golf cart. And happened just for a second, literally, it was a few seconds. Happened to turn his camera on and it showed him in a golf cart. And someone happened to be like, wait, that guy's golfing and it became an issue. So, you know, it's unfortunate that instances like that and if there have been others that have, you know, kind of spoiled, you know, this in some senses. Because they shouldn't have been, you shouldn't be taking, listening and participating in council meetings. You know, on a golf course. That seems to be pretty basic. And I, you know, can only imagine if it had been, you know, a woman in like a shopping mall, for example, or the equivalent, a nail salon. That the outrage would have been far greater. But this is where we are now. So what changed today as a result of the motion and the amendment that you brought?
Yeah, it was important to me that I didn't write like a councillor Meehan clause to just give myself the access that I needed. I think it needs to be broader than that and I think it needed to be based in what you would see in any other workplace. And so there is a duty to accommodate that all employers face to have reasonable accommodations on the basis of protected grounds. And those protected grounds are things like physical disability or family status. They're all outlined in the Alberta Human Rights Act. And so the amendment I brought was simply that you, in addition to an urgent personal medical situation or out of town council business, you could also access remote work provided that you had one of those accommodations. And so there's other people in council who will be captured by the amendment that I made, not just myself. And so I think it's an important change and it's something that I think a lot of workplaces are reckoning with, right? It's not just city council, it's a lot of people who have gone back to work and, you know, do we keep the good parts? The silver lining of the pandemic that we learned that we can work remotely or do we choose not to? And I think the question within politics and, you know, anything where it's, you're supposed to be representative of a population is even more fundamental question, right? Like federally, they're allowing remote participation to continue, which is critical, right? Because the travel for some people across the country is just way too much. But provincially, they don't allow any kind of remote participation in the Alberta Legislature. And civically, we are now allowing it in these more constrained restrictions. But I think it's pretty important that we continue to allow it and luckily council agreed. It passed with only one person opposed. So the amendment is now going to go to council where we like fully ratified and it be a bylaw that exists. This was just executive committee, but that should be in the next couple of weeks that this becomes the formal rule.
Well, and so during, during your comments on your amendment, you talked about equitable access. So in the context of women in politics and the change going back to like 1867 or actually, because I went back and looked because I didn't know Calgary was first incorporated as a town in 1884. Later incorporated as a city. So it's been 139 years of Calgary being incorporated. And you are the first to use this, to use. So, uh, you know, it shouldn't have taken 139 years, you know, in my mind. So how do we like the ground that you've set by being the first and not the last? But this change of seeing, you know, greater representation in politics.
Right, like, yeah, I'm not the first to use remote work, but I am the first to have a baby in town. I think is what you mean. And, and you know, it's such a good question, Sarah, and I often get this question from people. You know, if, if our population is 50% women, why don't we see even 50% candidates of women who are running? Not let alone winning. And when I ran in 2021, the field was eight people, myself and seven men. And that's the reality because truthfully, like the easiest path to a city council seat is to be male, able-bodied and well-connected. And that's, I think, you know, like we can walk through each one of those, like, you know, until recently, I think we have the most women on council right now than I think we've ever had. And we have, uh, what is it, four or five? I think we have five, if you include the mayor.
So Mayor Gonsalves, yourself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And so, uh, and we have the first woman mayor, right? So it's, it's taken that 139 years to get there. So there's not that many women who, who contest and, and I think there's a number of reasons for that. One, like just being well-connected enough to even be able to raise funds for a position like this. Like I really came from a lot of privilege because I was an athlete and had like an established donor network of people who supported me when I was trying to go to the Olympics. And so when I decided to run for city council, like I was actually able to leverage that. That's not the case for the average woman, right? Or average anybody, truthfully. And then even like the able-bodied part, like you have to knock 15,000 doors to get elected. Like that's not something a lot of people can do. And then when you look at the job itself, like we, you know, start council very early, like, well, not very early, but like nine o'clock in the morning. And we often will go till nine or 10 o'clock at night. A typical day like today was executive committee, so it's not even a council meeting. Started at nine thirty and then went till I got home at six. And then I had to be at a school council meeting to check in there. That's one of our, we do a lot of school council meetings and community association meetings as a city councillor. And then trying to get jet to bed. I hadn't seen him all day by seven, seven thirty. And, you know, then doing whatever else I can do in the evening. And so it's, it's a very full-time job. And one of the challenging parts of it is that the hours are very high, but they're also at odd times. And so some of the criticisms I received was like, well, you should just put your child in daycare. I don't know many daycare is that like function at eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night for multiple days on end. And so when we think about women and their ability to do this role, like remote work is just such a simple thing that makes a lot of it better because, and I said some of this in my debate today, like it doesn't matter what you do sometimes as a woman, like you'll just get the criticism. You get the criticism. If I had taken a mat leave, I had a lot of people being like, well, you shouldn't take a mat leave because if you do, then you're not voting on behalf of your constituents and you didn't let your constituents know that you were going to have a baby and they made a vote for somebody else. You hear those types of things. And then if you try and bring your baby into council, as there is a city councillor, I think in, is it Whitehorse or Yukon? She was in the news recently for, for doing, for doing that, like, you know, well, the baby is really disruptive. So you shouldn't have your baby here. But then if you like go to the doors as well and you're a childless woman, you will also face discrimination because people will say, well, you don't know what it's like to to have a family. And so how can you really represent people who are families? And so you, you really quickly realize that you can't win. And so that's why I think like these things like remote work and making them for everyone, not just for parents is such a critical aspect of, of accessibility. So that was my long-winded ramble. I'm not sure it answered your question, but there's just so many barriers and factors as to like why women don't do this job. And unless we're like actively tearing them down, I don't see how it's going to get better.
Well, I think that there will be a lot of people listening to this conversation who will be shaking their heads and like nodding their heads in agreement with a lot of what you just said. And it makes me think, you know, the criticism, like, you know, like how, if you don't have kids, how can you understand or why isn't your baby in daycare? All questions that men in politics do not receive. No one asks them what their wife is doing for childcare or what they're doing for childcare, right? Or if they have kids or not. It's just the double standards and the hypocrisy are so absolutely sky-high. And, you know, and also the world is not made for working women. I actually, you know, I drop my kids off for school, they need to be there by eight thirty and pickup, you need to be kind of like waiting for them to come out at anywhere between like three ten to like three, it's very precise. Up until they come out at three thirty and then drop off and like pick up, they're all very, they're fast processes and like, but tell me which, who has a workday that ends at three o'clock? Right? Where you can show up at nine and leave at three? I mean, it would be great. But all of these things and systems and, you know, the world is designed for, and you, you mentioned this in your remarks during council, for one person, a man to have been in the workforce or to be in the workforce and for a woman to be at home because that's who does the school drop off, the school pickup. Or say, you know, I forget, or my husband forgets that we need to make our kids lunch one day. And like, how does it get there? Who's doing that? All of these things, like you can't go to a doctor's appointment at eight o'clock at night with a with a six-year-old, right? Or in my mind, you shouldn't actually, because it's like really late. All of these things happen during daytime hours when people are meant, people are working and in a two-person home where you're both working, it just is really hard.
Totally, it is. And in my debate today, I talked about care dynamics and how care dynamics don't just inverse when women work. And so the example I gave is, you know, the in the previous generation and most of our parents' generation, it was that mum would have been maybe at home and was the CEO of the baby and was doing all of the care responsibilities. And typically dad was out of the house and not doing as many caregiving responsibilities just because he wasn't around and wasn't getting the repetitions with the baby that even he would have maybe wanted and deserved. And when women start working, it doesn't, like the care dynamics never inverse. They, they usually just moderate to something a little bit more equal. And that's because I think it's, it's not always, but I think it's, it's often because you know, the baby can be really physically dependent on mum in the way that they aren't on dad, just because of breastfeeding and other things like that. But it's also like an intentional choice that I make to not do to my husband what would have been done to women for decades. Like we want more equitable care. I think this next generation of parents are so much better about that than previous generations. And workplaces need to evolve to enable that. And, and you know, there was some pushback. I heard from some of my colleagues today, some of their debate was, well, it wasn't like that for me. Like my wife had to do this and I had to do that and we had to just trade off kids and that's the way it was. And so therefore you should have to just do the same. And, and I say, sure, like, but let's trade circumstances then. Like give us your housing prices, give us, you know, all of the other things that came with that generation. Like the truth is, the world has just changed and I think that we just need to help the systems evolve and change too. And it's probably one of the only things I'm grateful to the pandemic for was changing our minds culturally about remote work. And most of us worked way longer and harder during the pandemic as a result of virtual work. We're constantly accessible now, which is its own other challenge. But I think this is a positive improvement and I know it's happening in workplaces all around. You know, Calgary, Canada and the world right now as to what amount of remote work is reasonable and where can you do it and where you can't. But I think when it comes to elected representatives, it certainly needs to be part of the conversation going forward.
Well, and also the argument like, well, it wasn't like that when I did it. I'm sorry, but that is no, that's not a, to me, that's not a valid, okay, like I acknowledge that at the time it was difficult for you. But doesn't mean it should continue to be difficult for the current or future generations. Like have we, are we going to learn something from that? Or are we just going to manage along and, you know, have it be not what it should be? Like, that's just, you know, like, there's a reason why you know, cars didn't used to have seatbelts and then someone was like, maybe we should stop people from dying. So I'm going to design this thing and, you know, now they're standard in cars. And, you know, that's maybe like a weird analogy, but like we learn how to do better, right? We now put our seatbelts on every time we get into the car. We can also accept that there are other lessons in life where we learn how to do things better and we're better off for it.
Absolutely. We have to do better. And there's always this tension in, in political life as to whether you should lead by example or cater to what, you know, is, is the lowest common denominator of what, what people have. And, you know, I definitely received some very like aggressive emails about this and about like, who am I to ask for such a thing? And, and it's really not about me. It's, it's so much broader than that. And, uh, and so I think, you know, I'm, I'm fine to get this level of opposition. And for the most part, I think people get it. People are supportive. But of course, there's always those odd people who, who really fight against it, but that's, that's true. Change.
For any change and honestly, anything, like it's the vocal minority and I can, you know, it's always the squeaky wheel gets the grease, you know, and we're seeing a lot more major policy decisions being made at different levels based on a very small minority of people. Flagging something when it's not representative at all of what the majority wants, but because they're the ones that have, you know, put up their hand. They're overrepresented in, on certain issues. But I loved what you said today on, you said, you're okay with being the first, not okay with being the only.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it sort of blows my mind in some ways that I'm, I'm the first to do this and I'm not okay with being the only. And I, I think just to back up a little bit, when I, when I decided to have a child, I was really torn up about whether or not to take a parental leave in this role. Because on the one hand, I wanted to take it. But I also, you know, was concerned a little bit about what that would mean for me politically. But then I also didn't want to take it because I was really enjoying the work. And after I had, you know, conversations with my husband, he really wanted to take the parental leave. So for our actual care dynamic, it was, it wasn't just like the politically expedient thing. It was also just the best thing for us as a couple was for him to stay home and for me to continue to work. But I was worried about the precedent that I would set for the woman that comes behind me to sort of say, oh, well, you know, councillor Meehan didn't take a parental leave. So therefore I still don't have permission. And I even, Karina Gould, who's the cabinet minister, first cabinet minister federally to take parental leave, she only took, I think it was eight weeks when she had her first child. And she said exactly that. I didn't feel like I had permission to take anything more than that. And then now she's actually taking six months with her second child, but she has access to remote work this time. So she'll be able to vote. And that, that's a whole other ball of wax, right? It's like, what is technically possible versus what is, you know, culturally enabled? And so it's important to me that, you know, I can be this first, but I need to ensure that remote work remains accessible. And I'm still going to look back at, at the parental leave policy that the city currently has and see what kind of improvements we can make to it so that I'm not the only.
Yeah, well, and I think, you know, the conversation that we're having today, you know, and hopefully anyone who's in the space or considering running for office and, you know, hasn't had kids yet or is thinking about it and, you know, the impacts of that and, you know, that they they give themselves permission to do that. You know, there's a couple of instances that, so I actually did a podcast with Karina Gould and she talked about, you know, talking with the prime minister about this and him being supportive of her. But then also there's a really great case or an example of Alina Young in Saskatchewan. She actually, she was running in a by-election and she actually gave birth the day that she won.
Remember hearing about this?
Yeah. So there are some really fantastic trailblazing women who are reshaping politics, Canadian politics for the better, not only for themselves, but for their kids. And for women who are thinking like, can I do this? Should I do this? How do I do this? And that's not to say it's not hard, right? Like it's hard. But it has to change.
It does. And one of the nice things is I come from the world of wrestling, which for a long time was incredibly male-dominated, as you can imagine. Like when I was born, there was no such thing as like a women's wrestling world champion because women just didn't compete in the world championships yet and they, they certainly weren't in the Olympics. And there was a generation of women who came before me because I was kind of the second generation. And, you know, they're knocking down doors and they're, they're saying, hey, we want to train in women's wrestling and we want to come into this room, which is all males and all male coaches. And at first, like they really weren't accepted. And then over time, they were slowly accepted and there started to be world championships for women and Olympics for women. But the, you know, the discrimination was still very high, like as they would have outstanding wrestler that was given to the best male wrestler in the competition, but they would still hand out prettiest wrestler to to the, that was selected by, you know, a panel of, of male officials. And that happened, you know, within my lifetime. And then when I came around, because those women had really pushed down a lot of the doors, there, they had already gone to the Olympics once and, and they were performing really well. Like they were so good, you couldn't ignore them, that when I came through, it was not nearly as hard. And, and like, there was no question that, you know, the Olympics was something that I could do. And so I've seen like complete inequity to excellence in one generation. And I know that that can happen within politics and I think we're really on the cusp of doing it with all the different examples that you've given.
Well, I think you maybe just gave yourself a book title. Inequity to Excellence. From inequity in excellent and to excellence, my journey from Olympic wrestling to politics or something.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And you know, it's like, it isn't really just like I, I really was the second generation in wrestling. So I stood on the shoulders of like the women who had come before me, like they were the ones that, that broke it down. And so, you know, I, I know and I hope that the extent that I'm, you know, setting some precedent, that I hope it's positive. And I, I really hope that, you know, another young woman comes along and I don't have this title of being youngest woman ever elected to Calgary City Council for very long. Because we need desperately younger people to run for elected office. And this isn't about being like male or female, it's just about having young people be part of the conversation because you have such a large stake in the future. And the reality is we just typically have older people who run for elected office and they're not necessarily thinking as long-term because they're not going to be around to see what that, what, what, what they sow, the fruits of that, of their labor, so to speak. And so, um, really encourage younger people to consider it.
Well, yeah, we need, we need more people who are willing to challenge the status quo rather than say, well, it was hard for me, it should be hard for you. Right? And we need to like, extend a hand metaphorically or literally to other women who want to be in politics, whether elected or unelected. And, you know, and help them, help them up because that's what men do for each other. And I don't think that it necessarily happens because of this scarcity mindset around like, it's going to be taken away from me. There's only space or enough space for, you know, me and, you know, so many other women. And, you know, then you end up with gatekeeping and, and, and that's not the way we're going to achieve equity and equality.
Definitely not. And there's so much space for more women in, in, in politics. And I'll just put this out there, like I, I'm happy to answer any questions. I often get messages and DMs from women and just people in general who are considering running for elected office and want to learn more about my experience and very happy to talk to anybody about what it is like. And my door is always open.
Well, and I think I kind of mentioned it maybe to you in a, in a different conversation that we were having, but I'll, I'll tell or share that, so the, I'm going to start working on a project where because we can easily focus and I think an outsized amount of time is focused on, you know, simply asking women to run, which is very important. Don't get me wrong, it is. We definitely need more women to run, but we also need more women. We need all women actually to be the best prepared for what they are going to be thrown into. And that includes a lot of really frankly ugly things, ugly comments, tough moments, tough times. People say things that they absolutely shouldn't. It's just, it's, it can be really vicious. And so the campaign that I want to launch is I'm going to be asking women in elected office who have either retired or still involved or in just, you know, in public, in public roles to share the worst emails that they've ever received. With the intention of putting them in the windows of the store so that people can actually see them and read them. And we can hopefully have a conversation and broaden awareness that what not only women, men face it as well, but women face it in a, in a much you know, the knife is a lot sharper. Because we need more women in politics and they need to be able to be prepared for it, to see the reality of it. But we also, I think we need to do better as a society in thinking about what's acceptable, what's not, how do you treat people? How do you talk to people? How do you interact with people? And that, you know, that this is what, for the most part, people don't, women in politics don't share because we don't want to keep other women from thinking that it's, you know, this is the way it is, but it actually is.
Absolutely. And it is tough. You, you know, you don't want to discourage people from running. And, and I think it's a mindset in terms of, you know, just knowing that these comments will come. And it's not just, just women politicians. I don't know if you remember that story recently about, I think it was a Calgary news anchor, it was definitely a Canadian news anchor. Who addressed like the rude emails that she was getting. She addressed them on air and said like,
The bus driver pants?
Yes, yes. And, um, and so I think calling it out is important. But also, one of the things I've had to like wrestle But also, one of the things I've had to like wrestle with mentally is just a lot of the comments typically will come from people who aren't willing to stand behind them, like put their real name and their real face like behind them. And and if you're not willing to stand behind what you think, like, I'm not willing to really give it any consideration. And that doesn't mean it doesn't hurt. It does hurt to get these comments. It was certainly hard for my husband this week to like read some of the comments and and my family. Um, so it it doesn't, it doesn't take the sting away, but it certainly helps at least me. This is how I contextualize some of the feedback that I get. Um, is that I don't, I don't take everyone's opinion, um, if you're not really willing to stand behind it.
That's a really hard, that's that, I mean, it depends really on the person. Um, I take, I'm, I think I've developed a thicker skin, but it's taken a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you know, receiving one comment or having one experience can be, you know, can be hard for days for me mentally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, like, I just, you know, put a name to it. But also just, you know, like, we just need to do better. We need to do better.
We do. I I think just the challenge with with social media and just the fact that anyone can hide behind an accountant, say anything, I'm not sure we can ever really get rid of it. I think it 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 probably will always be there. But I think one of the things that really helped me this week was I did get quite a lot of nasty messages. But I also had women reach out to me, like personally through DMs and through emails and texts and just be like, hey, I see what's happening. I don't think it's right and I'm like with you and I'm supportive of you and you're doing the right thing and fight the good fight. And so um, that has been really filling my cup this week. Um, so for all of those negative comments, you know, I've gotten some really thoughtful messages, especially from other women elected officials who have reached out, um, have some good friends in in Okadoks and also in Airdrie, who's just both sending such lovely messages. They know who they are if they're listening, so.
Um, well, also I can say it's very cathartic sometimes to report tweets.
Oh, I've never tried that.
Oh, yeah, it feels really good because, I mean, things are different now than they used to be. Um, unfortunately, things aren't taken as seriously as they should be now. Um, but I even just did this yesterday because there's actually an account that, um, a parody account of one of your colleagues. Um, who has also posted about me. Um, and I went along and I reported multiple tweets for impersonating someone, which it is. And um, you know, like, it's like a fly swatter, right? Like, we have to swat these things and and, you know, and reset the balance because it's, it's just gross.
It is. It is just gross. You're you're completely right. And um, it's it's wrong and and gross and um, hurtful and all of the things. Um, and I often find, you know, just you're like, the more outspoken you are, uh, the worse it is, right? So um, I think, I think that's why I often notice like progressives will get it a little bit more because they are often trying to advocate for change. And so if you're a voice of change, um, you're going to get a lot, lot of heat um, online uh, as opposed to if you're arguing a little bit more for status quo.
Yep. Well, here's to advocating against the status quo. Despite the things that people say online, that's not going to stop. But going into it with eyes wide open and the conviction to keep on going, to do better for the women who are gonna come behind you.
Amen.
Well, thank you so much for having this conversation with me. Um, I love chatting with you. And um, I'm gonna, you know, let me know if and when you do something else with the parental leave policy. Um, because, you know, I'm not, I'm sure that these kinds of things also get looked at um, by, just to your point, you know, women in Airdrie and and Cochrane on council around the province, but this is also a national issue. This isn't, you know, just a Calgary thing. It could happen in any city or any town, anywhere in Canada.
Absolutely. Well, I'll keep you in the loop for sure and always appreciate your uh, passion for these issues, Sarah, and all the work that you do with Madame Premier and and your podcast. And we just appreciate your voice and and the platform that you give to these issues.
Thanks, Jasmine.